Thank you so much for coming tonight. This is, you know, we, you see that we prepared for a lot of people. Maybe some other people will come later, but I'm just thrilled that the people are here tonight. So a couple of things, just to let you all know. So we have done a lot of outreach. When I say "we," I always speak of us because I feel like we're all on a team here. And there's been a huge amount of outreach after the town purchased the Faith Baptist Church property, decided, the town council decided to tear that building down. You'll hear some more of this in a video we're going to show you. But there's been a lot of outreach about what to do with that property. And so here we are tonight, and where we have come is an indoor pool and fitness center. And that is what all the surveys, the outreach, for decades back when the community center was being renovated, a lot of people said, "Oh, can't we get an indoor pool there?" And the problem at the time, there just wasn't enough room, it wasn't the funding at that time. So here is this beautiful opportunity that we can provide this for the residents. We're answering the residents' call. And so the next step is, how do we pay for it? And so there are, you'll hear from the finance director tonight, if you have any questions about the ways that the town can tax and raise money. And there aren't that many because we are a Dillon Rule state, and so we have to do what the, what our state legislature allows us to do. But anyway, one of the funding mechanisms is a meals tax. We already have a 3% meals tax, and we are proposing of adding 1% more, making it a 4% temporary, temporary. And this would be temporary because I know I've seen some comments, "Oh, it's not really going to be temporary." It's gonna, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna keep it, and it's gonna be 4% forever. Well, I don't know what's gonna happen with maybe who's on council in 10 years, but the ordinance that the town council, the current town council will vote on is an increase of 1% for 10 years. That is the ordinance. So we are not, we are saying it would be sunsetted at 10 years. Now, we might sunset it earlier, and that just depends on if we do a capital campaign. I'm hoping that we do that. We may get funding, and we may be able to sunset it earlier if the council does end up voting for that. Okay, so what are kind of some of the rules tonight and what's going on? So tonight, we wanted, we are having a public hearing in November, but tonight is more of a time for residents to ask questions or just to sit back and listen to staff as they explain the financing. And we have our director of finance here, we have Marion Surfus, and we have director of Parks and Rec, Leslie Herman, here. They are going to answer questions about financing and also about the center itself, and also about the outreach. If you have questions about the outreach, Parks and Rec did a great job with that. We also have our, we have a lot of staff here, but our director of communications is here, who's done a great job with reaching out and I think providing flyers, and all of you should have gotten something in the mail. I mean, it's just been, we hope you feel like it's been an extensive outreach because we want to hear from everybody. This is not coming from the council, this is coming from the residents. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna show a short video. Oh, I also wanted to introduce council members. We have council member Anderson is here tonight, Chuck Anderson, and council member Howard Springsteen is here, council member Sandra Allen is here, council member Roy Baldwin is here, and council member Ray Brill is here. Did I get you all? And council member Jessica Vermaekis is in the back, sitting with our town manager, Mercury Payton. Awesome. Okay. So council is here tonight mainly to listen, and I'm included in that. I'm here to listen to you and to understand your concerns, your questions, and all of that. There might be a few questions that we jump in on if it has to do with policy, or if it's something we just want to add some more information on. So first, we're gonna, and again, feel free, you know, you, you can talk about anything you want to talk about tonight, but we really mostly are talking about the meals tax. How are we gonna fund this indoor pool and fitness center that the residents have asked for? So again, I would, we're not gonna stop you from, from whatever your heart wants to say tonight, but again, it's mainly about the funding mechanism. So just keep that in mind. We don't have as many people as we thought we were gonna have, and so our rules are gonna be a little different. We were a little concerned, like, oh, how many minutes does each person have? Again, you want to, you don't want to get, you want to keep it kind of brief, so we do, we would like you to ask one question at a time. That way, the next person can go and so on. We know people need to get home to their families or whatever, so please, just keep it to one question. And then, when everybody's had a chance to ask a question, if you have another question, we'll come back to you, and you can ask a follow-up question or another question completely, or just state something that is on your mind. So we are gonna go now to a video, and that's gonna explain some things. Some of you might have already seen this video, but I think you will enjoy it.
Within the town of Vienna, you see the signs of a community that prides itself on recreational Community center fitness classes, gyms, and ball fields. A sidewalk and trail network that makes the 4.4-square-mile town walkable and bikeable. And a town green that now serves as a central gathering space for recreational activities and events, which contribute to a greater sense of community.
I don't think now we could imagine our town without the town green. It's a very distinctive part of our town. People love to gather there.
The Vienna Town Green was funded through a temporary 1% meals tax increase from 2002 to 2008. Now, the Vienna Town Council is considering using the same funding approach to pay for a proposed indoor public pool and fitness center on the former Annex site on Center Street.
The community has shared over and over again that an aquatic facility and fitness facility that is public and open to all is desirable here in our community.
This has been something that has been talked about for decades, really. It is clear the community wants this. The majority of our residents have spoken, have answered surveys. There's so many ways that we know that this is what they want. And now, we are trying to figure out the best way to make it happen and how to pay for it.
The Vienna Town Council voted to purchase the former church property on Center Street in 2020 with a vision of using it for future parks and recreational purposes. The facility served as a temporary police headquarters from 2021 to 2023 while the new police station was being built next door. A feasibility study determined it was too costly to bring the former church building up to code for recreational purposes. So the Vienna Town Council voted in 2023 to demolish the structure and start fresh with a new building on the three-acre site. At the same time, the Parks and Recreation Department conducted an outreach campaign to determine what the community envisioned for the property. Many ideas were submitted, and two common themes emerged.
Every time we've done an EAS assessment for the town of Vienna, it's always come back, a pool has been in the highest demand. And even going through the Parks Master Plan process, we've had a statistically valid survey and also community survey, and those have also, the pool has risen to the top, along with fitness.
In response to the community feedback, the Vienna Town Council agreed to explore the highly-desired facility with conceptual designs to see what it might look like. The concepts were presented at a work session in September of 2024.
The conceptual design includes a four-lane, 25-yard pool, and then it has a, like a tot area, kind of like playground in the water for the children, and then an area, and those are all zero entry, so kind of like a beach setting. They can walk right into it. And then another area next to the lap lane, so we can also remove the lanes and have, like, exercise classes for all ages. And then there's a slide that's separate that goes into its own little pool of water, so as not to disturb the other folks that are swimming or playing in the, in the larger pool. And then on the second floor, it would be our fitness facility, so there would be all the free weights and the machines, and it would overlook the pool area.
After seeing the preliminary designs, the Vienna Town Council voiced its commitment to the project, and now wants to know if the community supports the idea of funding it through a temporary 1% meals tax increase from January 1st, 2025, to January 1st, 2035.
With the meals tax, we can build this by 2030. That's, that's short. Without the meals tax, it wouldn't be until 2040 at the earliest. We just don't even know what will happen between now and then. We can have a different council, and of course, they could choose differently, but also costs, we know, could go up. Just so many different things could happen, unexpected things could happen.
The current 3% meals tax pays for planned capital projects such as roads, buildings, and parks. The extra 1% would be dedicated specifically for the pool and fitness center project, enabling it to open by 2030. The 1% increase equates to an extra 3 cents for a $3 cup of coffee, or an extra 15 cents for a $15 meal. And every penny would pave the way to make a decades-old community dream of an indoor pool and fitness center come true sooner rather than later.
This is a great opportunity for our town. It's something for all ages, which is one of the things I love about it the most.
Tell the Vienna Town Council what you think about a temporary 1% meals tax increase to pay for the proposed indoor pool and fitness facility. Comments are being accepted anytime via email, phone call, letter, or in-person during a public hearing on Monday, November 18th at 7:30 PM at Vienna Town Hall. Your input will help inform the town council's final decision about a meals tax increase on Monday, December 9th, 2024. For more information about the proposed project, visit www.vianav.gov/annex.
Okay, well, that had a lot of information in it. So again, some of the important things are that the town did this before to build the town green, it was sunsetted, and so we thought that was a good model, and this is why we are proposing it again. That 1% again, will go directly to this facility if it is, if it is proposed, which is different than, I think, other jurisdictions. Sometimes when they, they increase a meals tax, or they want to have a meals tax, they don't, I think they don't necessarily tell you where that money's going. We are telling our residents that 1% would go for this facility. Okay, so we have our experts here tonight, we have our director of finance, we have our director of Parks and Rec, and they are here to answer questions. First, I know, Marion, you, director of service, you wanted to say some things before we go to questions, but is, are there any questions about the video before we go any further? Anything that was in the video that anybody wants to ask? Okay, good, all right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Marion Surfus, I'm the director of finance, and my role tonight is to explain how government finance works in about five minutes, but I'll be glad to answer questions. So the big, the big question here is, how do, how does the town fund what we do? We all know, if you live in town, that you pay extra real estate taxes for the town of Vienna. That funds mainly our operating budget, that funds our police department, that funds our parks, our parks department. It funds all the things that happen in a year, mostly, and also the trash removal service, fixing potholes, those sort of things that would happen in a year cycle. That's what the real estate tax pays for. But capital projects, which are our bigger things, like the new police station, like major parks renovations, are paving our streets, building sidewalks, those things are fun, are called capital projects. They last more than one year. And consider the way you finance an operating project, like you buy your groceries with your salary, but you don't buy a house with a check. You buy a house by borrowing money. That's what a capital project is like. When towns borrow money, that's called, we, when we borrow money, we, we issue municipal bonds. And when we say the meals taxes are going to pay for the capital projects, the town has pledged meals taxes to pay back those bonds. So we borrow money every two years to, to build a list of projects, different things that we want, and we plan that out for 15 years. So in order to, and so the, when the town instituted a meals tax in 1990, it was pledged to pay for capital improvements. So why, why are there any, how, why that, and are there any other ways to finance capital improvements? Well, we're constrained by the, by the state of Virginia, as the mayor sort of alluded to. Virginia specifically gives localities like the town of Vienna the right to do certain things, to tax certain things, to have fees for certain things. So I would love to see a tax on vaping, but we're not allowed to do that because the state does not give us the right to do that. A tax like that would raise, you know, some money for some of these other things, help defray operating expenses, or could be pledged to capital costs, but we can't do that. As the mayor said, the temporary increase would allow us to build it sooner. We could probably still build a pool under our current model, under a 3% meals tax, but we have parks that have equipment that won't be safe after a while, we have some bathrooms in parks that need renovations. We've saved up money and did addition to the community center and then did the police station, so we sort of depleted some of our, our older funds, but we're planning for all these projects in the future. So that's one other thing. Let's see. The meals, we're gonna talk about, we have a number of slides in here, let's see. Okay, here. When we were looking at this, we considered a lot of different features. Our meals tax in Vienna is at 3%. We are the lowest in the surrounding area. Not that that's something that we don't like, we are proud that we've been able to finance all these capital improvements at 3% and maintain a triple-A bond rating and have a solid rainy day fund. We can do all those things. But 1% difference is small, and it's also not paid just by, a real estate tax change is paid by anybody who owns property in Vienna, a landlord, a homeowner, et cetera. But meals taxes are paid by anyone who drives through Vienna and, and stops at a restaurant and buys something there, or goes to a concert at the town green and then stops at a restaurant, or is walking on the W N O D trail and decides to stop and have lunch and things like that. So we're sort of reaching the, the greater Vienna area and spreading it out in a smaller amount. This, to me, is sort of the more, sort of breaks it down to dollar terms. You are paying some meals tax already, you're already paying 3% if you eat in Vienna, but with a 1% increase, basically, on a $15 meal, that's a 15-cent increase. So on a $50 meal, it's a 50-cent increase. So not large, and lots of meals, and that would help us fund that. We take in last year about 3.5 million on our meals tax revenue in general for fiscal year. An extra 1% would bring in about another 1.2 to 1.3 million. So what are some alternatives? Well, some alternatives are raising, mentioned, why don't you raise the real estate tax rate? Well, we could do that. Raising the meals tax rate, if we, to raise about 1.2 to 1.5 million a year, that the meals tax would increase, would be about 2 cents on the real estate tax rate, or about $300 a year for the average homeowner, not factoring in commercial or anything like that. That would be, that would be the same as 300 to $100 meals in a year. So that's one, one thing to consider. The other thing to consider is that real estate taxes fund operations. So in the future, if we, if we decided tomorrow, if town council decide tomorrow to go ahead with this plan and to build the pool, nothing's gonna happen for another four years, we'll open our doors in four years, but we'll be setting up a whole new department. We don't have any aquatics instructors, we don't have any lifeguards, we don't pay for the water in the pool or the buildings in the pool, so all that will have to be funded, and that will be funded by reserves that we have in the general fund and by real estate taxes. So real estate tax is already going to be taxed, if you will, to, to fund this when it operates. What other alternatives do we have? We could delay the project without raising the meals taxes for 10 years in order to save up money, which is what we did for the community center and for the police station. We have some land we're not using that we've bought for different purposes, because you never make more land. So when properties that are attractive that come up, that we think will serve our interests, we've purchased some land, that will be like a short-term fix, that doesn't, that is not a stream of income over a number of years. We can also defer maintenance on our other capital projects, which is not ideal. And the town of Vienna is well-run, council makes good conservative decisions, and we want to keep it that way. As I think Director Herman's gonna mention in a little while, we're also looking into a capital campaign, we're also actively in talks with some partners. I know the Navy Federal has announced its indication to, to work with us and lend us some money interest-free for a short period of time. We're pursuing other, other corporate partners, and we'll see what we can do for that. Any of those sources can help us not increase the meals tax for 10 years, because it's an ordinance, it can be repealed anytime. So if we find that we're making enough money and we don't have to, we don't have to keep that extra source of revenue coming in, it can be repealed. Let's see, I mentioned the rates of other localities and the comparison by prices, and so then I'm gonna turn it over to Director Herman, and we can ask questions anytime along the way. Thanks.
Good evening, Leslie Herman, Director of Parks and Recreation. Thank you for being here tonight. I just want to share that the Vienna Community Center, once we opened the renovated building in 2017, folks were coming into the center and they continually would ask us, "Where's the pool? Where's the fitness facility?" And unfortunately, that was not included in the plans for the renovation. With the plans for the renovation, we did gain the large fieldhouse, and then the open corridor that brings a lot of natural light in, plus a very welcoming lobby, and lots of improvements to the existing classrooms and the auditorium area. However, we did not gain any classrooms. So also, with gaining a pool and a fitness facility, we would also be gaining additional classroom space. So in the conceptual design that was presented, there are two class, four classrooms, two on each level, where we could extend our fitness classes and yoga and all kinds of different types of classes, trainings, that sort of thing. So those are also big revenue producers. So the, the amount of funds that we bring in over at the community center exceeds $1 million a year, and these extra classrooms would allow us to increase the revenue, which would help offset the cost of, for the town to subsidize the, the new building. So I also wanted to state, I know the mayor had commented back, there had been a feasibility study and some surveys done when we looked at the renovated community center back in 2013, but I would like to state that back in 1970, the town actually was on the path of building a pool. However, there was a, it was only gonna cost about $125,000, believe it or not. And then unfortunately, there was a special referendum for the pool, and voters decided they did not approve the spending for the quote, for the pool, because when they went out to bid for the construction, it came back at $250,000, because there was a delay in the time period. So the town just wasn't, they just didn't, weren't willing to spend that amount of money for a pool. So it has been going on for over 50 years now that the town has wanted to have an aquatic facility. Marion had mentioned that there, we will be doing a capital campaign to raise funds, working with various organizations and also private organizations to generate additional revenue that will, with the, the plan to be able to make it so that the meals tax doesn't, doesn't need to go on for a full 10 years. So we will be aggressively working on that if council should decide to move forward with the increase to the meals plan, or to the 1% meals tax on December 9th. Thank you.
Well, we have one person who has signed up to speak. But that does not mean the rest of you cannot speak. So, no, 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 sorry, Jen Morrow, please, please stand up and please ask your question, whatever it is you have to say, please come forward.
I do feel like I need to provide some context before I ask my question, is that allowed?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm Jen Morrow, I'm the chair of the TBLC, and I do want to say we appreciate all the outreach that you've done in engaging the business community, because I know this has been on a, quite a fast track since the, for the past couple of weeks. So I'm here to speak kind of, really, to some of the information that we've gathered in talking to different restaurant owners and, you know, engaging with different partners in the community and getting their feedback. So I just have a couple of points. As a small business owner myself, this does have an impact, and we don't need to talk about it because you all have heard it multiple times, I think, from different people. And while I appreciate things like getting private funding and NFCU naming, or, and naming rights, that's not something small businesses can do. So right off the bat, that really kind of hits home, because you're bringing up something that may sound wonderful to you as trying to fund this facility, but that's just one more kind of notch against small businesses, because there's no way that we can afford to pay for something like naming rights. And that's marketing. So I just wanted to make that point.
If I could just respond, they're not getting naming rights.
Well, whoever would be getting naming rights.
That, that would take a 51% contribution, so we don't think anyone's gonna be getting naming rights.
Okay, well, then that.
Just to clear that point up.
Okay.
And maybe a name, it could be something, just to get this out there, I mean, what, what the fire department did way back when, they, I think it was $1,000, so if you, if you donated $1,000, you had your name on a plaque on the wall. So it would maybe be something similar to that. I don't know, there had been no talk about what it's gonna be, I'm not, I'm just throwing that out as possible.
Okay. So I'll get to my question. So in reviewing a lot of the documentation, getting to this point, I kept coming across things that the town council had committed to as part of kind of assessing the annex, and that was to be fiscally responsible, as one of the core values. So my question is, considering that that was a main part of your decision, can you explain why going down a path of building a 25-plus-million-dollar facility, which led you to wanting, needing, or proposing to increase the meals tax, is being fiscally responsible versus going towards one of the, I don't want to say cheaper, less expensive options that was a close second from what I could see, which was having open space in the community, which would have been more of an outdoor pavilion? I know you all, people behind me, probably don't know what I'm talking about if they haven't read all the documents, but so my question is, can you speak to how is this being fiscally responsible if you look at all the surveys, where in my opinion comparatively, there, there not, there wasn't that big of a difference in possibly what the community wanted, but there is a major difference in the price, which is now forcing you to find ways to fund it? And also, what has been deleted or delayed or removed from the capital improvement plan to accommodate this facility, which it had not been in there until recently?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jen, good questions, okay.
I can answer the second part first.
Yeah, go for it.
Nothing's been taken out. It's time value of money, where we put the meals tax increase into effect now, we'd save up some money, and so this is what we did to build the police station, this is what we did to build the additions of the community. We start with a big cash balance, then we draw down on it to pay debt. We're not writing a check for the, for that, and we pay that off over 20 years. So the meals tax wouldn't, increase would not be in effect the whole time we're paying off the project. But we borrow money every two years, we stop, those bonds get paid off, so every two years, we're paying off a bond issue, we're starting another bond issue, and it all, it all works out.
My question, my question was, the original CIP did not have the pool in it, so when you recently revised it, and it's in the 2028, I believe, the 2026-2028 plan, what was given up?
Things, things were moved around a little bit.
So, and so I think it's, I think it's fair to know, like, were there other improvement projects that possibly could benefit, like parking and safety and et cetera? So again, this is, I'm not an expert in these areas, but I think that the community should know this.
So I guess the, the real answer isn't nothing, but when we do, when we do a capital budgeting, we have a lot of aspirational projects, and as we discuss them, we decided some we're gonna, we're gonna move around a little bit, wait for the, the end of the Parks Master Plan. There was an aspirational project for the town green that we put off, maybe a couple of parks projects. We didn't really cut anything, we just sort of moved them around a little bit, but not major.
Well, I'll say this, the town council made a decision not to, we have not approved our CIP for the next year, because we are waiting to see if we're gonna put the, the pool and fitness center in. So it all depends on if we pass this 1% increase in the meals tax, then if that happens, then the pool and fitness center goes into the CIP, and then we vote on the CIP. So it's not there right now. We haven't, we haven't moved anything around, everything, we kept the same, we are, we are still maintaining our.
I've got, I've got notes about how it's gonna happen.
Right, 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 when, if that does happen, but it's all dependent on if the town council passes the 1% meals tax. And then Leslie, did you have question, did you have about the Y pool and fitness, about the surveys and the community outreach?
Yes, so.
Yes, so you are correct that the gathering space also came up, so it was aquatic, aquatic facility, fitness and gathering space that reached, reached up to the top. One of the things that council looked into also was the demand for a pool year after year after year, to be able to use that space. And also, it could be used by folks of all ages, that was a big thing, that was one thing that was talked about when we did our, our meetings with council, was to, it was very important that it wasn't going to be used solely for one particular group of people, that would be available for all people. So, and also because we're located right in a residential area, we would have to be careful about that. Having activities that are actually indoor are less disturbing to the neighbors than it is if we were to have just outdoor gathering spaces. I mean, it would be great, I mean, personally, we have troubles over at the community center on Saturdays, because the parking lot's so full with, for the farmer's market and the few activities that we have going at the community center. And it would be wonderful to be able to give the farmer's market a nice, very large visual, visual area, so it frees the space of the community center. But I think the council felt that being able to build an aquatic facility and fitness facility that the community's been wanting for decades, kind of trumped the other ideas. And there was also an operational cost study that was done, so that was a big piece of this also. It was just kind of like pie in the sky, wouldn't this be nice? Council was very diligent to know, well, how much is it going to cost us, because lots of folks will say, a swimming pool is, I forget what the term is, but, what am I trying to say?
A money pit.
Yeah, a money pit, that's it. Just like, just like the movie. So that was one thing that council did, was to have a operational cost study done as part of the annex long-term use study, so they could determine whether or not the town could actually afford to do something like this. And the numbers did come back positive, that this, this is actually doable. And then the, that we actually, in the study that was provided at the September meeting, there are the revenues and expenses that were expected based on membership and also being able to hold classes in those four rooms. So all that was taken into account to determine what the subsidy would be needed for the town council, or for the town to be able to continue to fund the facility. And the town, the town does not want to go broke, so, we do, we do not want to fail. So-
Again, I guess, what I, I understand all that, but I wanted to hear, maybe the, the right people aren't here to address it, but with that val, core value of being fiscally responsible, the only project that was looked at, the only project that figures were presented, I believe at the end of September, you received the, the figures, which was just a few weeks ago, that the cost versus looking at kind of two, two projects that were completely different in, in cost. So I just, that's kind of, like, if that was a core value, was that considered when you, you know, made the decision, knowing that a pool would be much more expensive than anything else, and at the time, you know, knowing that it would be something that was more difficult to, to fund, and now the impact is rolling down and is being proposed as a meals tax? So it's really that, I'm trying to stay focused, as you asked, on the meals tax.
Right.
So I, I don't, I mean, we can have a whole nother conversation about pool or not a pool, but that's, you know, to me, we wouldn't have to have this discussion if you were having a project that, you know, of a different scope. So that's kind of where I'm at with this particular question.
So Marion, do you want to say something? I know town manager wanted to say something, and I might say something too.
My job duty is to keep this town fiscally responsible. We look at lots of things, we get an annual audit, we budget very carefully, council's very supportive of, of great fiscal practices, we have a AAA bond rating with this part of using that, the meals, pledging the meals taxes to, to our capital projects, it's looked upon very favorably by the rating agencies. We don't want to, I don't want to make the town go broke, we want to be fiscally responsible. And we're not starting a meals tax, we have a meals tax, we're only talking about a 1% increase, a little bit, to be spread along a lot, to get a, to make the community more vibrant, to get a great community facility. Think about the Town Green, the same financing mechanism was done there. We're going to have, we're going to go through a process, if this goes forward, with design. If the design proves to be too costly, like in the time when it went from 125 to 250, you know, there will be changes made, it could be deferred, there's lots of different options. So that's, hopefully I successfully answered your question.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll say, you know, there's no doubt, different things could be in that space that wouldn't cost as much as a pool. I think Leslie hit on some really important things, is that some of the questions, I think, that were asked in these community outreach events and these surveys, the question was not only, what would you like to see there? That's just one question. There were a lot of other questions that were asked, and so combining all those things, again, I think two of the most important things is, this is a facility for all people and all ages, so it's not just for baseball players, it's not just for pickleball players, not just for tennis players, darn, no, I'm just kidding. But it's, it's, you know, really, I think those two things really hit home to council, because I think in those surveys, there were just other things. Fitness was talked about a lot by people, so whether it was not specifically pool and, you know, weights and stuff, but fitness was mentioned a lot. And I know that Leslie, you can speak more to the surveys, but, but that's kind of what I think, what you were saying too.
Yeah, that's correct. And then also, I'd like to add that this was, the study when we went into this, and unfortunately, we couldn't use the building, as was shared in the, in the little film, we would have liked to use it for recreational facilities. That was the original intent, was to be able to use the existing building, and we could offer more camps, and we could offer classes, and we could get into the wedding and funeral business, because there was a sanctuary. So there was, unfortunately, that just, that just didn't pan out. And then we were talking about, well, what do we, what are we going to do with it now? And so council gave us direction to look into things, and the idea was, first we were looking at short term, like, do we tear it down and then the land's going to stay vacant? And so the question became, well, what's our direction? Let's take a look and see what the long-term use will be, because that will drive what our short-term use is going to be. And so when we went through this whole process, and it came through, that was, what was rising to the top was active, active recreation, event space, a pool, aquatic, fitness, even gathering space. It was determined that, let's go ahead and take a look at these, these different avenues, and see if, if we can, move forward, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought, but the long-term use study to, to drive what was going to happen with the short term, and when the results came back, that what was possible for the long-term, council was like, go ahead and move forward with looking at the fitness and the pool, and let's see how that comes about, and then also doing the operational cost study. But the idea was never for it to happen immediately, the thought was for it to happen in, you know, 10 to 15 years, it was always a 10 to 15-year study. So, and then based on that, we were going to figure out, well, what can we do with it in the meanwhile, while we have this land? And so everyone got real excited when it came back, and the operational cost study made it seem like, well, you know what, this is something that, that potentially could happen now, but we have to figure out a way to fund it. So while the community is excited about the possibility of a pool and a fitness center, do they want to wait 15 years for it to happen? Or does the community want to add an extra 1% meals tax to what they're already paying when they got to eat, so that they could fund the pool, so that their children are only waiting four to five years in order to use a pool here in the community, instead of having to drive over to Oakmont, which, as everyone knows, is not fun traveling on Maple Avenue during rush hour? So that's kind of how, that's kind of how this whole thing happened. So it was originally a long-term study, and it wasn't supposed to occur, occur till, for 10 to 15 years, but there was excitement and it looked like it was possible, but the funding was the question, and that's why we're here tonight.
Yeah, and, and if the community says, no, we don't want the 1% meals tax, council will listen and say, okay, well, we'll put it on the CIP, and maybe it will get built in 2040, maybe it won't, there's no guarantee, because I think I said the same thing in the video, but there could be different council, costs can go skyrocket, who knows what's going to happen at that time? So this is certainly not something we, we are, we are saying for sure is going to happen, that's why we're putting it out there. If you want it sooner rather than later, then we need a 1% meals tax, that's the whole thing. And I think families start to, people in my neighborhood, I've talked to them, they've got little kids, and they're like, no, no, we want it now, we want it now. I mean, usually when people get excited about things, they want tomorrow. Well, it's not going to happen tomorrow, but five years is at least something that people can foresee, and we all, we're all getting older, so, you know, we all think, gosh, where am I going to be in five years, and what, how old am I going to be in 15 years? So I think it's something, so that's what we have to decide, do we want it in five years, do we want it in 15 years? And I think that's, maybe in 15 years, we don't even know about 15. So I think that, that's kind of the, really the bottom line of the whole thing.
And if I could just also add, so with the 1% meals tax, I know it impacts the restaurants, but the town does not want to, doesn't want to hurt the restaurants, because we rely on you all for the income from the meals tax in order for us to, as it was shared, you know, put asphalt on the roads, build a renovation to a community center, put in a new police department, put in playground equipment, make large-scale repairs to our parks. There are so many things that go into it, some of the tree initiatives that we have, there's some large-scale things with that. So we don't want to do anything to harm the restaurants, because if you're successful, then the town's successful, and that we're able to keep up and keep Vienna a place that everyone wants to live.
Okay, others, please come, Bob, come on up. Oh, first the town manager is going to say something, and then, and then, and then Bob, you can speak. Oh, there we go.
Yes, hi, my name is Mercury Peyton, I'm town manager here. I know others want to speak, but I just wanted to just answer the question a little further about the fiscal responsibility piece, and then the other projects in the CIP. So the fiscal responsibility piece, if you look back in time and, and look at when the town made the decision to fund the Town Green, there were probably some of the conversations going on then that's hap, that's happening now. And sitting here presently, we can't imagine the town without the Town Green. What they did was, they said the fiscally responsible thing to do would be to raise the meals tax for 1% at 2002, and then sunset it in 2008. Now, here, sitting, we can look retrospectively and see that since 2008 to the present, we've maintained a AAA bond rating, we've been able to be fiscally responsible going forward. And so using that same blueprint, from the fiscally responsible standpoint, we've run financial models, Marion has been here many, many years, and, and has actually was here when, and was here when, when we raised the meals tax before, and has that experience and understands how to run the fiscal models, to make sure that what we're doing can be done, and then make sure that we also can be, maintain our fiscal, our AAA bond rating and such. So the fiscally responsible thing to do would be, A, to either, you know, raise the meals tax now for a number of years, and then sunset it. And even then, at the time of 2002, it wasn't a unanimous vote, the council, it was, it was a vote 5-2, I think, to, to raise the meals tax. So it was a conversation, but, but at, at the, at the time when that decision was made, they were able to accomplish their goal. And so we feel like we have two choices. One is to be fiscally responsible, raise the meals tax for time, be able to build it, doors open 2029, 2030, sunset it in 2034, 35 or earlier. That's one fiscally responsible way to do it, because you raise the revenue that you need to accomplish the goal. The other fiscally responsible way to do it would be not to raise the meals tax, it would be to wait until 2040, because as Marion indicated, whatever we're going to do as a town, we're going to do those things where our expenses and revenues meet. So I would never recommend to the town council to do something where our expenses would far exceed our revenue. So the fiscally responsible thing would be to do one of the, one or the other. So it's, it's a choice for the council to make. The second thing I'll mention is, you talked about what CIP, what capital projects were removed. The way we do our capital projects, we kind of spread them out going to 2034, 36. So whenever we hear from residents about flooding or drainage issues in their, in their community, we hear about sidewalks that are necessary, we look, we hear about roads that need to be repaired, we hear about trees that need to be planted, or whatever it might be, we add those to the capital project plan, and it may be that the item is in 2026, or 28, or 30, it always remains in the plan. And so we had a CIP that didn't reflect a pool, aquatics, that had the projects in it. And then we have another CIP that is an alternative one, that has a pool, aquatics in it, that has a 1% meals tax increase within it. So that revenue allows for us to add that into the CIP, and have all the other projects that, that were added as well. So nothing's been removed from the CIP, there may be a question of which year it may fall in, an item may be in 2028 or 2026. I think even some of the road repairs that we were talking about doing, we were actually able to move those forward a little sooner. So the answer to the question is, we always have the plans in the CIP, we always have them in there. And the second is, is that the fiscally responsible thing to do is to make sure you have enough revenue to do what you're trying to do. And so we believe that this plan can, can do that, if the council wants to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, town manager. Bob Marsh.
I'll be real quick. Two questions. One is, the, one of the things that I serve on Jen's committee, so one of the things that I kind of am struggling with is, what's the value for the business community in Vienna in this? Now, I'm not a business owner, I'm a resident, so, and I, I know, I listened to you on your, on the call, both with our group and then yesterday, and I know, you know, this is supposed to bring in people, and there's going to be more kind of thing, but I think if we're going to divert money, there's other projects potentially that the business community would value, that would, they would probably be willing to contribute, particularly restaurant community, towards, towards those costs. You know, again, I know you're already sort of farther down the road on this kind of thing. The other thing is that, having been a government official over my life for a long time, there's always a fudge factor in these things. And so the costs of this, and I'm not quite sure, I don't understand the 2040 number, but, you know, hopefully I'll still be around then, but I, maybe not. So I don't quite understand where that comes from, but, but the cost factors, I, I know you're figuring out a certain cost, but there's got to be a certain fudge factor, you're, hopefully you're putting in there. And then also, in terms of the operating costs of this thing, there's got to be a certain amount of cost in there. So more, most importantly, I'm, as my role, I'm curious about the value for the business community with all the other concerns, and mayor, you know, you hear it all the time, you're, you're out there all the time, and, and that the other thing is, I, I always am skeptical about the long-term costs on these things. So thank you.
Okay. Do you want me to get, do it, go first, and then you guys can add on? Okay. The council, I believe, and council, you all are here tonight, so if you want to speak up too, but, you know, again, going back to something like the Town Green, we look at the Town Green as, people, I always ask people, let me go back for a minute, when they move into Vienna, why they move to Vienna, and then if, if I'm just meaning for the first time they've been here, why do you stay in Vienna? And they always talk about community, they talk about, the Town Green is one of the things that comes to mind, because a lot of our events are held at Town Green. They talk about all the things that Vienna has to offer. We are looking at this as something more, something else that is for our residents. This is a value to our residents for years, like we said, going back, actually 1970 maybe, but definitely, I remember going back to when the community center was renovated, people wanted the indoor pool and fitness center, and of course, we know our town is so health-conscious, we know that, I mean, it is just, I just went to a Pilates grand opening, two doors down from another Pilates studio, and they're both full. So we know our town values health. So this is something that I believe we are looking at, something to add value to the quality of life of people in Vienna. So what, what does that mean? That means people are flooding to Vienna. I mean, you see, a house goes up for sale, it's sold. It's sold for a lot of money, and that's just the way it is, because people want to be in Vienna, and they want to be here for that quality of life. That's what they tell me, there, there, it's not, there's a lot of things that we have in Vienna, but it's that quality of life that they, that they value, because it's what they, they experience every day. And so, so this is something that, that, that businesses can benefit, because you've got people in your town that want to support the town. I mean, every- I mean, every person I have talked to, and again, I, I, you know, I haven't talked to everybody in Vienna certainly, but they love the restaurants that we have in town. And they have said, and I said to them, well, you know, this 1% increase, is that going to change your going out to eat habits? They said, not at all, not at all, not even gonna, not, not at all. Didn't blink at all. So, so you've got this, this, you know, the businesses are in a town. And why do businesses come to this town? I think one of the reasons is because of the residents. And so it's, it's, it's all together in this quality of life that we have in our town. And so I think, you know, your businesses, we want to support, I, we want to, we want a bookstore in Vienna. So we try to go to Barts Alley and support them. We want an Evelyn Rose or whatever restaurant, I don't want to say names, but in Vienna. And so we go there and support them. So if, if, that's, it, it all is together. And I think it just kind of circles each other and we support each other. But I might not have touched on a few things that you want to add.
No, you've done a great job. And, and all plans are, you know, in process. We went from no money invested in economic development to an economic development department of two people by 20, between 2019 and 2024. So council has demonstrated that they are absolutely willing to work with the business community. And as Leslie said, we don't do well if you don't do well. We're, we are incented to do that. Can I point to any program right now, not right this moment? But we are certainly going to look for ways to partner with the business, with the businesses to make this benefit them too. I don't have anything concrete to tell you right now, but we won't do well if you don't do well.
Sure. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah. Oh, sure.
I think, I think for the video, you need to be on.
Thanks. When you do these projects, over, and you've been around for a while in your role, where, how much of the overrun is there? I mean, usually these things, and that's, because.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. In the beginning, there's just an estimate. As we get further down the pike, we, like when we do design, we'll have a much better cost estimate of what construction is. Every bond issue, I, I keep throwing out the term AAA bond rating. What that means is we have the highest bond rating so we can borrow money at the lowest interest rate so that we save the town money that way. So by, by, you know, instituting those things. But we always, when we issue bonds, we get a premium on those bonds. So there's some extra money there. In every bond issue, we have a contingency factored in. So if a contingency plus a premium that are helpful for some of these, these overruns. Oh yeah, our fudge factor is something we definitely can, a contingency reserves, we definitely could consider that. On the operating side and on the capital side.
Okay, I'm going, Leslie, go ahead, and then Councilmember Anderson.
Okay, thank you. I would like to add that through the CIP, which is additional funds for us to do more larger-scale improvements to town, not just building new things. One of the things that, our department works very closely with the Economic Development Department. So with that are a lot of creative ideas and also ways with economic development. They want to draw more people to the downtown so that they can also have a positive impact on the businesses. So that's something that Natalie and I have been working on closely this past year is, what are some things that we can do to the town green that's, we're not just having a draw on the community when we have a special event? How can we make the town green a place to gather, like in the middle of the afternoon, for parents with young children just to hang out, let the kids run around? And they go to one of the nearby restaurants or to go get ice cream or whatever treat, chocolate, or there's so many treats on Church Street. So, but yeah, so that it's a place, it's a place that they want to gather. Kind of similar to not being a mosaic, but mosaic folks actually go there and their kids just run around in circles. And the parents visit and they eat there and spend a couple hours and, and leave. And so that's something that we're working with Economic Development to try to determine, what can we do with the town green so that we have folks there on a more regular basis? And we're not only drawing them in when we have our events. Because as economic, they want to, they want to drive business to you so that you do better. And which also generates meals tax, which helps us to make improvements to the, the various facilities and amenities that we have here in town.
Hi, I'm Chuck Anderson. I'm in the county council, so I'm a council member one. But I thought I would address sort of the elephant of the room, which is how much is this going to cost? Which is a big deal. Because this is a much bigger capital improvement project for a specific use than the town has ever contemplated in the past, and we recognize that. We've done a bunch of studies to give us a rough ideas as to whether or not this is even possible. And the early results that we have is that we could do it if we basically raise the meal tax by 1% and move back some of the CIPs by a year or two, okay? Having said that, what's very important for everybody to understand is that there's a multi-step process to get to the point where you put a shovel in the ground. And in order to get there, the first thing we have to do is basically put the fundamentals in place to even make this possible. Which is decide whether or not we're going to do a meals tax increase, a temporary meals tax increase. Because we actually need that money to do the next stage, which is the detailed design, which gives us a precise figure as to how much it's going to cost to build, how much it's going to cost to operate, and what type of revenue streams we can expect. And it will be up to a future council to make that decision as to whether or not it's a go or a no-go situation. I will say this, I came in this as a skeptic because of the reason that, and Jen mentioned it quite openly, this is a much bigger cost than some of the alternatives. What sort of changed my mind into thinking about it, and believe me, I'm thinking about it, and I've not gotten to the position where I believe we can make an informed decision on the economics of this yet, is that I did look at the results of the statistical survey, which was unbiased. It basically attempted to get what the real unmet needs of the community were. And it, it was pretty clear from those results that an aquatics facility and an, and a, and a gym facility, particularly, that would appeal to the elderly, because this is not designed for, as you can see, a competition pool. It's designed for more of a workout pool and it's got an infinity section, not infinity, but the, the part where you walk in and all the rest. It's designed to be more of a workout type of facility. This is something that I think that the town really could use. We still have to figure out whether we can pay for it and absorb it, I agree with that. But I think that, and, and we are not going to make that decision until we're absolutely sure that we can absorb the cost. Not only the original capital costs, and Bob, we've learned from the community center that we do have to build in a fudge factor. We also learned that we need to hire a, a firm to oversee the construction management, to control the costs. That actually worked out extremely well in the police station where we actually came in pretty much on budget because we had this extra set of eyes making sure. But also the operational costs, because a pool is a different kettle of fish. It has a very high operational cost and it's got a very high revenue factor. And we have to basically, as a community, I think, be ready to make a decision. Do, do we want that to be part of our, our, our annual operating budget? And as a, as a community, decide whether or not that's what we want. So I just thought I'd give you that economic background and give you an idea of what some council members are thinking with respect to the fact that it's going to cost a lot. We're not making these decisions lightly or on a whim. We're looking at the numbers, we're actually trying to work at expert, work with experts who will give us real numbers, who can help us through this.
Great, thank you, thank you. And just one more thing, I was just talking to the VBA director today and, and our Economic Development Department. And if this goes through, I mean, there are so many things, you know, we can do to help restaurants and do, so anyway, that, there are always things that we're looking toward doing. And so that's just a thought. Okay. All right, any other questions? Michelle, come on up.
Hi, I'm Michelle Kong from 315 Cabin Road. I'm coming in a little late. I did not see the survey results. I missed that meeting that I wanted to see. So at this point, has the, is the pool project final decision? What if the meal tax did not get passed? Are you then going back to the, back to the big drawing board and looking at other options? Or is this pool project pretty much the final project? And the question is then the timing, but, so that's the question number one.
That's a good question. So I'll have to, you know, the council will have to discuss that. I, you know, right now, I, we are looking at the pool and fitness because of the surveys, because of all the outreach that we've done, that rose to the top. So it's not what we want, it's what our community wants. So the community has told us pool and fitness center. So as far as I am, I know that's what we're looking at. If we decide not to pass the meals tax, then there may be another discussion. I mean, council can always change your mind or say, well, let's look back at those surveys. Maybe there was something else we could do. We may. I, I don't want to promise, I don't want to say because there's six other council members. But, but at this point, I think after doing that outreach, we realize that those are the things that rose to the top.
And then second question is on timing of the meal tax implementation. So when it is decided and, and got favorable response and that the, the meal tax is going to be the one that's going to fund this project, when do you start the tax implementation? Is it, does it coincide with the project timing? Or do you start funding and accumulate fund and project starts late? And if the, there's that gap, then what happens if, if, you know, the project cancels, whatever? Then what do you do with that money?
Good questions.
Question, but yes, the, the plan, the plan as it currently stands would to be to start the increase of the meals tax on January 1st. One thing that hasn't come out in the discussion yet is that the county is also seriously considering a meals tax. We, you know, nothing is guaranteed, of course, until it's voted on. But as of right now, the county doesn't have a meals tax. The county, like the town, struggles for ways to diversify the tax base. I think that no one who lives in Vienna wants a casino in, on, in, on Route 7 because that's one way of, they were talking about diversifying the tax base. But they are definitely looking at a meals tax too. So they're going to be probably moving about a year behind us, where we'd be a year ahead. And then we would save up that money, we wouldn't start to make payments. We wouldn't be borrowing money till later in 2026. So end of 2025, beginning of 2026. So we have about a year to save up. Then we're paying, you know, 1/20th in principal and interest. Hopefully by that, the end, you know, closer to the end of next year, interest rates will come down a little bit more. Interest rates are high right now. We don't want to be borrowing money right now. And then speaking of fudge factors, you know, we have, we have little piles of money from different things that, that can help supplement this if there is a gap. We have reserves, we have reserves, I should say.
So we're talking probably one or two-year gap of when we start.
A year, probably a year, more like a year.
So.
And we're paying off another bond issue in the meantime. So there's lots of different moving pieces.
So you're looking at 1-1, January 1st, but if, so this is going to move if, if there's an interest.
I mean, we already have the apparatus in place for meals tax. The only reason that, we're just talking about changing the percentage, the reason that Fairfax County is going to move slower is they have no apparatus set up right now. If you think about it that way. This is what things accountants think about.
Thank you, Michelle. I think what's interesting too is that if Fairfax County, if, if Vienna did not have a meals tax and Fairfax County passed the tax, well, they could pa, they could tax us. And, and that money would not be going to Vienna, that'd be going right back to Fairfax County. So it, it actually, you know, especially if they do pass a tax, it benefits us to have our own meals tax that goes back to, to Vienna. And then, yes, come forward. Hello.
Hi, my name is Roxanne Paul. I've lived in the town for 40 years. And 14 of those years, I've been commuting twice a week to Oakmar, now Oakmont, to use the fitness facilities and to swim laps. So of course, I was thrilled when I heard about this. But seeing the video now and seeing that there's four lanes, that's at most eight people at a time swimming laps. Just this morning, I was at Oakmont and I think there's 12 lanes, plus there was a water aerobics class going, plus the, the diving pool was open to swimmers too. So there were probably 16 of us swimming laps. And that was during the day when most people are working or kids are in school. So I guess what I was going to just suggest, maybe you've done this already, is to compare the population of people that feed into someplace like Oakmont and, you know, how many laps they have, how many lap lanes they have compared to the population of Vienna. It would be a shame to build something that's this nice and have it too small to be able to handle the population. I mean, that was just my first thought, like, huh, eight of us could swim at a time at most. But my question was, will it be a model, if, if it's passed and if it opens, would it be a model like the county rec centers where you buy a membership and it's one rate if you live in the town and another higher rate if you live outside the town? Or would it be only open to town members? So, you know, that's something I'd be curious about.
Yeah, go ahead, Leslie.
Thank you, thank you, Roxanne.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that. So yes, there, it would be a similar model as Fairfax County. There would be youth, adult, household, senior rates for residents and also non-resident rates. Which currently for, at the community center, non-resident rates are 25% higher than what resident rates are. So there would also be proposed daily fees. So if someone just, they didn't want to have a membership, but they wanted to come use the facility, whether it's the fitness or the pool, there would be a daily rate so they could just pop on in and, and pay the daily cost and then enjoy the facility.
Okay, so it would be open to non-town residents, but it would be percentage higher?
Correct.
Thank you for those questions. Anyone else? Who else would like to ask a question or give a comment? Yes, come, come on up.
Kind of simple to this question, maybe I just don't understand how things work. But why isn't Fairfax County paying for part of this? I see Oakmont and Spring, I think there's, there's three other very similar facilities real close by. They paid for those and we could use those and they'll, they'll be able to use this one. So are they not allowed to pay for things in the town of Vienna? Or, or, I mean, what's the difference here, right? You know, if there's a need for another facility like this in this area, let them pay for it. We'll even donate the land, I think. We got an empty piece of land. So is that feasible or what am I missing here?
That's a great question. And the town would always love to take, to, to receive some, some funding from Fairfax County for the things that we offer our residents. I will talk to Walter Alcorn about that. I really will. We, and I know we did for the community center. But you all can give some background or give some information also.
Yeah, currently, the support that we receive from Fairfax County in terms of parks and recreation, they do subsidize the, the salary for our teen center because they do see it as teens that are not living in the town but are just outside the town are also using the facility. So they kick in about $30,000 to help with the teen center. And then the Waters Field and Caffey Fields, those are actually owned by Fairfax County Public Schools. So they also help when it comes time to re-turf. They assist with a percentage of, of covering that cost. And also, I don't know if you've noticed, if you happen to go over there for baseball or, or football, they're putting the new stairs in for the press box and they did pay for that. But for Parks and Rec, that's pretty much the extent of the support we receive from Fairfax County.
Right. Okay, yeah, I was just curious if, yeah, maybe we haven't asked, correct?
No, it's a great question. I think our town manager can, can say, add to that also.
I'll turn this way.
Here, here.
So, so the, the first question that you mentioned about the, the four laps, four lap lanes. So what you see there is conceptual and is scope and scale. You know, and so it's not final design at all. So we're taking these comments into consideration. And if there is a possibility of doing more, we'll, we'll take those things into consideration. But this is just concept, so we're not even at the beginning of the design part. And then the other part about Fairfax County, I have conversations with county folks from time to time. We had similar conversation about the police station, which we believe, you know, we pay, you know, I live in the town and everyone who lives in the town. you know, I live in the town and everyone who lives in the town pays county taxes as well. And there was a conversation about assistance with funding the police station. And I got a certain kind of response to that. But we know the reality is, is that as 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 town of Vienna residents and our facilities here, the county does not, they don't have to come in and and provide these services that we provide. So it does actually make sense for them to assist with funding things like aquatics and such because it 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 takes pressure off of the outside of the town. And our and our tax dollars are support the county as well. Councilmember Anna Selleck, you might want to say something as well.
Just quickly, we're totally familiar with this argument. And we know that we pay full taxes and that they should contribute. It comes down to politics, people, okay? We could make a huge effort to try to get Fairfax County to contribute. The downside is they would want some level of control and it would definitely slow down the process, which would increase the cost, which would mean that we would end up potentially in the same place that we are now, but basically with loss of control. The other thing to keep in mind is there's a moral argument that they should be assisting because we pay full taxes. But the reality is that we have one supervisor who recognizes that moral argument, who represents us, and eight supervisors who do not. And so we don't get a whole lot of love from Fairfax County. And so that's why Vienna has gone its own way on a number of issues over the years without the the county's support. That's not to say that we won't try to, you know, persuade them to do the right thing. But it's not a real focus of ours as of yet. Every time I meet my supervisor, I whisper in his ear. And I meet the chair of the board supervisors, do you realize that we in Vienna, we pay 100% of the taxes and you need to show us a little love? But to try to basically bring them on, we're working with them on the on the on the library for right now, for example. And I will tell you that the benefits are, in that case, it's their library, but it does slow things down when you get the county involved.
Yes, please come forward.
Good evening, Pratik Manjari. I don't have 40 years, but 30 years in the town. Thank you all for having us here today. This has been very helpful. It was helpful for me to learn that this design is a concept and not a design. I think it'd be helpful for a lot of us here and virtually to understand what is the process in the future for the town residents and others to be engaged in the actual design process because that might inform some of our thinking about the the money that's put forward.
So that'll be later. If if the council passes the meals tax increase, then when we get into the design, then residents, you know, we we're writing things down now, no doubt. We've heard about the lap lanes, we've heard some other comments. So those, all those emails, comments are being collected now and they will, they will, they will be remembered, no doubt. But there'll be time also in the future when we're actually looking at the design, when we actually have the architect that's designing it, the residents can give more input.
Okay, great, thank you.
Do you all have anything to add to that? Okay. Okay, Howard, councilmember Springsteen. Here, no, 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 come.
I just want to talk about the pool. I want to talk about the ability to get the county to do things. And you have to be very careful. And this has nothing to do with the pool. But if we didn't control all our own things, we could get, they will come rush right over us. About a year, year and a half ago, and they will do this, they want to come and put a sewer line down Maple Avenue from Tysons to Oakton, tear up Maple Avenue for a year and a half. Linda and I caught wind of that. And it would destroy businesses. And they said, well, we would give you $1,000 or something to a little bit to bury the phone lines. It was going to cost us 15 million. So we refused it because we own the water and sewer system. They couldn't force it. We made them go around the town because we had the ability, we own, we own the streets, we own the water and sewer lines. And so that's one reason to have pretty good control. And I'll, the other thing is I've come, I was, I ran, I was president of fire station years ago. We did a major capital campaign. We did renovations. I think your wife was, helped us doing the first capital campaign. I think we raised $140,000. But I worked my relations with Kathy Hushins for years. It took us 10 years to get 1.5 million for the county for the Vienna Fire Station. And we had to basically sign a life away. We got her to release that 10 years later. So it's really hard. I agree politically, we should get money from the county. But honestly, we have one supervisors and there's nine other supervisors and it's a challenge. One positive note, what they're helping with, with, and maybe, I don't know, some people, is that we're going to deal with a deer population. We're going to have the county come in with their sharpshooters to do shooting because they have an established program. But that's been a real effort to get them to do that, even though we pay full county taxes. So I didn't want, you know, I could talk about the pool. I just want to let you know, getting things down at the county can be a real challenge.
No, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Springsteen. I think one thing, oh, yes, Doug, Doug, please come up.
I'm Doug Francis. So, you know, I've been going through the the online tax increase and it talks about this is would be a 10-year increment. So and then I was looking at the bottom when it talked about the town green when that was done and that was a six-year.
It's just that, I believe, yeah.
So the town green was only a million dollars, though. I mean, it was only about a million dollars.
The land itself was more than that. I don't.
I think you need to go back and look at that because for some reason, that stands out in my mind.
I remember preparing the check. That's about all I, that's all I remember. But I mean, then there's also a lot of improvement costs.
So the 10-year just doesn't seem realistic to me.
Well, it's it's only paying for, it's paying for bond payments, repaying bond payments. So it's not the whole cost of it. It would not cover the whole cost because we have, it's just an increase in what we already have.
Okay. Just really wanted to get a handle on those numbers because it just seemed unrealistic.
We'll get your information. We'll look into that. I know it was more than a million.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can get back to you.
Yeah.
Right, right, that's great. Okay, let me, let me see if other people have a question. Okay, other people, anybody else have anything they would like to say or ask? Yes, please come forward. Dan?
Be brief, Dan Mulville. I appreciate Chuck's views and Bob's about the economics of this and contingency planning because projects rarely come in on target. So it's important to include that into the estimating activity so that we don't find ourselves in a cost overrun situation. Having said that, deferring the project until 2040 seems like a missed opportunity. And so I, although I hate to support taxing myself, I think 1% tax to enable us to pursue this in a timely way would be worth doing. So that's my view on this. That's it.
Thank you, thank you, Dan. Gosh, you said something that, yeah, and and and, you know, I, we look at, I mean, a real estate tax is something we all have to pay. Meals Meals tax is an optional tax. We don't have to go out to dinner. We can cook at home. So it is an optional tax. And I think the other beauty of it is that it's not just town residents that are paying the tax. I mean, it's people from that are coming to Vienna and and we welcome them. And whenever someone tells me they are coming to Vienna, I was at the Cafe de Vienna ribbon cutting the other day and a couple was there from Tysons. And they said, we come to Vienna every week to go to, at least to go to Cafe de Vienna. They love it so much. So we know there's people that are coming to Vienna. They use our roads, they use our sidewalks, they use our infrastructure. They may be going to this pool and fitness center if it gets built. And so how nice that they would also be paying the meals tax that would help fund it. So I think that is important to remember that we are, we are trying to make the tax, to make this less for our residents and certainly not something that they have to pay. So those are just two, two important things I I think are nice about the meals tax. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, okay. Town manager, would you like to, would you like to add something? Okay.
So I don't think this has been said yet. So one thing is important to remember with this is that with the membership, there will be no cap in this concept. So whereas we have private facilities here and the waiting list, there will be no waiting list. So this would be something that will be accessible to all. I think that's very important. And then the other thing to mention, too, is I had a very interesting conversation with the business owner here recently this week. I go out to eat frequently in town here for lunch, meeting friends. And and then when a group's come in as well, we eat in town. And one question that was posed to me was, why now? Like, why, why look at this now? And I think the difference from the past, maybe in the 70s or certainly 2012, I think we didn't have the space. I think we were looking at doing aquatics in 2012 with the community center renovation, but we didn't have the space to do it. Now we have the property and the land. I think that's, that was part of the catalyst of this, where now we have this property and we went out to the residents and said, okay, what do you do with this property? So I think that's one of the catalysts or, I guess, inflection points or whatever the term of art may be for it. So that's how we've kind of arrived at this point in time. So so raising the meals tax is one fiscally responsible way to doing it. Whether we do it now or later is a, is the question. And so I think that's just one thing I just wanted to mention to make sure everyone understood those things.
Okay, I think that's awesome. Well, if there, there are no more questions? Jen, yes, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so back to the meals tax. Again, as the TBLC chair, I've been talking to a lot of restaurant owners one-on-one and very personally. I can only speak to the ones that I've talked to because her rules were not, the TBLC, we can't all talk together unless it's an official meeting and that's not happening until later this week. But so I wanted to relay for those in the room, some specific feedback that I've gotten from restaurant owners that that I don't think everybody here has heard. Just because we did it before is not, should not be the the reason. And when the town green project keeps being brought up, people get very frustrated because as the TBLC, I'm just presenting information. I'm not going out one side or the other. It's just, this is what's happening, you know, how's it going to affect you? So number one, well, we did it with the town green and it worked. The town green is a center of town. It's open to the public. It has open space. It brings people to to the center of town. So businesses are like, well, yeah, the town green, that's okay. But an aquatics and fitness center, you know, which the business, again, the restaurants and businesses that I've talked to, people are just coming for a specific use. They're not going to be going there and then going out to eat. They're not going to be going there then getting ice cream. You're going to be in a wet bathing suit or you're going to be going to a kid's party. So this is feedback I've heard from people in the vicinity. And then the other thing is, is it just because it's easy, you know, because they did it before and it worked? This is the the feedback I'm getting. Also, well, we've been asking for things, not since 1970, but parking has been, we've been asking, this is, we not being me, we being the business community. And there hasn't been a rush on trying to get that done, you know? Studies have happened, et cetera, et cetera. You know, why hasn't there been sort of, you know, movement on that? No, I know personally, because of my role, there has been studies done, you know, et cetera. Well, I I'm not, I don't want to get into the parking discussion. That wasn't my intent. I'm just telling you that the business owners are seeing that all of a sudden, this is just, you know, being being thrown out. And 10 years is 10 years. And I think that, you know, the impression that is kind of being seen is every time the town is going to need something like this, they're going to increase the meals tax because that's easy. Again, not everybody in this room was on the call that you had hosted with restaurants, but they have real concrete data that they had shared as as far as increasing costs with labor. The January, the minimum wage is going up. Food costs, supply costs across the board have gone up. Our rents go up because the property in Vienna is going up. And they are pricing, looking at the total ticket. And what I had heard from a lot of the restaurants was this is going to hit our weight, our wages, our tipped staff, people that are really, they're living on this. You know, they don't even live in Vienna. They're working in Vienna, they're taking public transportation, you know, they're et cetera, et cetera, you know, all the different people. So I think there's a frustration because the business community wants, I should say more the restaurants, not just all business. They want you to know their pain. And I know you're listening, but I don't know if you really understand kind of how like pushing this through, starting January 1, is going to impact these owners. So I would just suggest some more formal conversations. Again, these are small business owners. It is very difficult to take time to come to a meeting like this or to even participate, you know, in in a phone call. Because even though you might have five minutes to talk, you have to be here for the two whole hours. And so I just want to encourage council and and you, the mayor, to to really have conversations because, you know, you multiply one meal, maybe 15 cents, but you eat out twice a week or five times a week and that's 52 weeks a year. That adds up to somebody's pocket. And when you're looking at the total ticket price again on a meal and the restaurants are saying, people are tipping and they're already like, oh, sales tax, then meals tax, well, I'm going to leave 15% instead of 18%. I mean, that's a reality they're trying to express. So we're going to continue to talk to these restaurant owners because there's over 130 and we haven't talked to all of them, just to see again, what would make this livable? You know, incentives down the road. You know, are there opportunities that the town can help small businesses, particularly the restaurants, you know, with with their workers or with their facilities, you know, any any incentives rather than just slapping this on them, you know, because we've done it before and it's easy? I'm paraphrasing, please, I know you see my face and hear my voice, but, you know, this is across the board. So rather than a question, it's really more of an ask, is that as you go through this process and consider whether or not the meals tax, you know, is the best way to do it, it feels a little bit like, and this is me talking, a gamble. You know, you're hoping it's 10 years. We might get, you know, capital fund, we might get people to pledge money, you know, all of these different things. So I just think for us, it feels like a really compressed timeframe. And we want you to really be, to be able to understand the feedback that we're trying to provide from the the restaurant's point of view. Because if you look at certain things, it it doesn't really tell the story from the restaurant's perspective. So thank you for listening. I appreciate your time.
No, thank you, Jen. That's, that's why we have a town business liaison commission. And I know we have another council member that wants to speak. I just want to say two things and then councilmember Springsteen wants to speak. The parking, don't forget, we are getting a garage. We are getting parking at the, at the, at the, at the Patrick Henry Library. And for those of you who don't know, we did have a Zoom, the town had a Zoom meeting with restaurant owners. I know our Vienna Business Association executive director put, alerted every restaurant. She said she walked all day last weekend, telling the restaurants about that meeting. But we can certainly have more of those meetings if, you know, some people didn't, couldn't make it. I think that the town is willing to have another meeting with restaurant owners if they can't make it. And we hear you about the incentives. I know Ashley is here tonight from economic development and she, she knows about that. And I think it's great that we have an economic development division, which we did not have. which we did not have 20, 2020 was when we started that, when we hired our Ms. Mon Cal. Ms. Gilium, Gilium, Gilium. 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 Mayor. Yeah, sorry. Okay, and then, well, let me, let, Councilmember Springsteen, you or our, our finance director? Yeah, let me, let me, let me give you this, yep. And then, and then finance director, yep.
I don't know how we survive without finance director. And, you know, she's done a great job and she's leaving to become the deputy director of economics. So, you know, we've, we really have, we, when I started here, we had nothing. I know how we survive. But I just want, the council has always very concerned about parking. But like everything, there's a rich history. Where your offices, Mr. Arrington, we tried to do a partnership for parking garage. First, it was 2 million, then it was 4 million, then it was 6 million, then it was 8 million, and he bailed out. So we, we lost that opportunity. Then we tried to do a parking with VPC, that didn't work. And then we tried to do one on Mill Street, and that didn't work. So we're down to the library. So we're very sensitive about parking, but our options for parking disappeared over the years. And I, I thought the Arrington, you know, you guys, you have a great business. But I don't know if we had parking, the parking garage was going to be behind where your lot was. And we had, we had an outfit from Winchester come in and Shockley, yeah, what? Did you see?
It's not mine.
Yeah, but I'm just saying. And so we have, I just want to let you know, we've been really trying parking. And so the library now is our last option right now. So hopefully that'll, that'll go, and even that was a challenge with the county, you know? How much will we pay per space, how much they want? You know, they have not been the easiest folks to deal with.
I was going to say exactly what Councilmember Springsteen said. We're, we've been looking, Mercury got here in 2011. We've been, that's his, like, his number one goal, look for parking. But like you say, you know, plans don't always work out. But Councilmember Springsteen articulated exactly what I was going to say.
I was, I was actually going to say the same thing. The council actually voted 70 to do the parking on on Church Street. And then they pulled out, they voted 70 on Mill Street to do parking there. Then that changed, you know, so, and, and actually, there was an idea on, I think, lawyers in church as well that was about to get, you know, so, right. So we had, and now we're at the Patrick Henry Library here. So we have been focused on parking, just like has been indicated here. And another thing I want to mention, too, is that as, as you indicated, there are some underlying factors that the business community, the small business community realizes. I'm, I'm the product of small business. So I'm standing here right now because of my parents who owned a small business for 40 years. And I kind of saw, you know, the workings of that. And so it, there is a reality that whether we raise the meals tax or not by, from 3% to 4%, there are increased supply chain issues, there are increased costs, there are increased factors that the small business person just experiences that people don't really see and understand. And and it impacts their employees and you talk about tips and all those types of things. You know, so those are real factors. We understand that, I understand that, I know Natalie understands that and our finance director. So when we talk about, okay, well, let's consider raising the meals tax from 3% to 4%. Actually, I was one of the last persons to get there to actually make this suggestion to the council because since I've been here, I've not raised the real estate, not recommended raising real estate tax since 2011. We've had the same tax rate since then. And I'm very reluctant to raise any types of taxes. The reason why I actually said to the council, you know, we might want to consider this, knowing those underlying factors are at play, is that this might be the moment that this council could look and say, okay, we did something that 20 years from now, people will look back and say, you know what? This was a public good that was accessible to all residents, young and old, every demographic, no wait, wait lists, no capsule membership, come in and experience this thing. And so it was more of a visionary concept, knowing that, what you're saying is very true. It is, it is a reality, all these supply chain issues, costs going up for the small business owners. I mean, if you're not a national, a brand name restaurant, and, I mean, it's, it's more difficult for you to actually, to exist month to month. So I understand that completely. So this recommendation is not made lightly by staff at all. And the council understands completely those conditions. And, and, and we want to do going forward, whether we, whether this goes forward or not, we want to be here for the small business to do everything that we can to make all those small businesses thrive. Because as the small businesses thrive, so, so does our town.
Just to address the, it just came up, we've been talking about it for a long time. We've just gone public with it recently. So as, as things got more jolled in, so this wasn't, this wasn't a hasty decision. We've been, we've been in the planning phases for quite a, not necessarily raising meals taxes, but the whole process for a while. So we haven't, just haven't gone public until things were more settled, that's all. Well, just all of it, moving forward with the pool quicker, raising the meals taxes, all that. We've been looking at scenarios for quite a while, so.
Okay, any other questions, comments from anyone? Yes, Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to address the issue of the effect of a facility like this on local business. And I'm sensitive because I, I was on the TBLC, the Town Business Liaison Committee, a couple decades ago. And I know how hard we work at that point to try to promote town restaurants. It's a continuing battle. But I have, as I look at, at this, at this concept plan, what I'm thinking of is the number of parents who will drop their children off for a pool party or a class or something and then have two hours. What will they do? Well, they're not going to just sit in their cars. They're going to want to do something. They will generate economic activity. There's absolutely no doubt in my mind. Now, that's only limited by the number of people that we can attract to a vibrant community hub like this. It's all a matter of getting the bodies downtown. And then, once we promote town restaurants, town facilities of all kinds, places to shop, places to, to do anything. This is the sort of attraction that I think is going to have immeasurable positive effects for town businesses.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Councilmember Baldwin. All right, so I am, I'm, I'm out there eating out a lot and going to the restaurants and talking to the, to a lot of the restaurants. I've talked to a lot of them already, but I'm going to continue doing that. And I encourage the rest of the council to. I know that they're out there talking to restaurants and also residents and seeing what they thought they think. Because we have a lot of, we have a lot of conversations with residents all the time. The next event is on November 18. It's a public hearing on November 18. So you all are welcome to come to that. And as you leave, our director of communications, did you have a clipboard? Did you want to?
Somebody wants to indicate how they feel about the meals tax.
Yeah. We can hand out these cards to the, to the link on our website. Okay. And there's a survey and information. Okay, good night, everybody. Thank you.